Right, so let's go on here. I'd like to hold the regular council meeting January 24th to order. For sort of business, call for any disciplinary interest regarding the agenda. Heard none. Go right to the agenda for, are there any additions, deletions? Want then get a motion to approve the agenda?
The agenda?
Heard none. Favor. Period. Adoption of previous minutes, minutes of the 2022 December 20th regular meeting and the minutes of the 23 January 10th committee in the hall. Are there any errors or any omissions in those minutes? Do we have that? I think it's not. Can I get a motion to approve those minutes?
Approve those.
Favor. That is period. Uh, publications, presentations, we'll go to business, first order of business with the 7.1 motion tracker for 2022, the final review of the merger. Say, Don, do you want to make any comments on that?
Um, thank you, your worship. Basically, we've been tracking every motion made in 2022. So you can see that we were busy on the council. You were actually just busy somewhere. Four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven pages. And I'll pause just to advance your worship. My dear, so if I start to yell, just let me know because I can't modulate my voice. So I can't really hear myself talking. That's a good thing. Um, and it's indicated by the motion tracker. They're all complete. Page 22 to 48, there's still two motions, 2212, 329, where we got through motion to allow this proposal with death set curbs in the bylaw office. Uh, we did, we did dispose of it, uh, to the water treatment plant. They didn't have, uh, they didn't have anything over there. So it is now being set up and water day. And then, of course, 2212, 330, because it happened at the end of the year, to begin looking for a plan for disposal of this work. But that's ongoing. So that's going to take a while. Um, and then we report, we'll report on that as we go along. So basically, all motions have been enacted, accounted for, and completed.
In the future, at least, I mean, a lot of like 11 pages, but like at least a third, if not half, is mundane procedural. You know, motion that we're going to camera, motion to return, you know, just very, very mundane procedural things. Maybe exclude the procedural items just so it's a little more digestible. It's not 11 pages of procedural stuff then?
What you're saying, Mr. Ray, is to come to Gilbert's construct procedural and keep the requests in?
Yeah, like so, for example, I'm on, I don't know, page here, but like the one is motion to send a letter to the M L A indicating council does not support provincial leasing. Okay, that's, that's a valid thing that probably should be in there. But then underneath it is motion of separation, motion to go to recess, motion to return for recess, motion to go into camera, motion exit camera, motion to return. So there's one thing and then 10 just kind of mundane procedural things after it, which cutting those out would make it a lot more digest.
Yeah, that's, Mr. Ray, to come to Gilbert, that'll be approved for 2023.
Sure.
2022, we kept everything in there because it was the first kick of the calendar. You could see everything that we've done. It'll be shorter.
No, and I appreciate that, actually, yeah, just for you, you know, it cuts out all the kind of the unnecessary stuff. Makes it a lot easier to go through quickly.
No, we're happy with that, too. We just, uh, we weren't sure, you know, for the first year. We thought it would be better if even the population had an opportunity to see what was going on. I don't disagree with you and that was, that's the plan.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other comments in there? I was trying to get a motion to approve the motion tracker for 2022.
I'll move the motion tracker for 2022.
Favor. Period. All right, 7.2, Water for Life, Ganton Proposal. So, um, back in before Christmas, when we, uh, we took all the papers into, uh, Ganton. And this is what they came up with. I believe we have about 15,000 dollars in budgets still from last year. Say, Don, do you want to comment or agree?
I think comment first, your worship.
Sure.
Uh, basically, they put in step one and step two. We don't want to add step two right now because that's part of the corporation. So there's no need to decide to keep that. But we do, uh, we want to extract the 75 to have all the, ensure the last files are closed and through the water. It was, uh, what it's supposed to be. And then we'll look at step two closer to the end of the year potentially, particularly one that says the water corporation. Uh, we just wanted to make sure that all, all stuff is done technically. We could certainly enact this because it's all over our budget. But being into the water for life, the water project, uh, appreciate conversation with council and, and a motion so that everyone's agreed.
And just one thing, I guess, I'd like to point out is that, you know, originally, when we took all the papers in there, they reviewed those papers made in charges.
Uh, correct, clearly. We organized everything for them.
And this is, this is what they think that, you know, basically in 20 years going on, that they should take steps E to E to protect everything and see where we're at. Is that correct conclusion what they're saying?
That is correct. We don't want to move forward until we have this locked down and we're not anticipating any issues. This goes with 20 years. So we want to make sure that this locked down and the, uh, the legal team assigned to them under this and, uh, Kim Wakefield will make sure that this button looks like they have experience with that. One third.
I mean, I get, I usually want to cover the bases and everything. It seems maybe excessive to be paying a lot for them to organize. I think that step one is kind of just fairly mundane record keeping. I don't know. Is it really necessary to pay 350,000 an hour to a law firm to do the basic filing and sorting?
Um, Mr. Ray, through the counsel, but it, it seems like that what they're doing is they're going to pull a lot of the last files and make sure they're intact. Make sure that there's no negotiations of paying. We're confident there are. But I don't trust 20 years ago. Um, and so we want to ensure that every last file that's there is concluded properly. And that, uh, we don't, uh, we also have to look at the, at some of the pipelines that were across the, uh, the county land. Make sure that was buttoned up tight as well, so the county doesn't come after it later. I'm not saying they will. We're just, we're just buttoning up 20 years of, of, uh, stuff, I guess, a lot more than that. That's really good.
Right. Yeah, I think so. This is coming out of that water for life grant or this is coming out of our budget?
Our budget.
We've still got the, the.
Well, no, last year's done. So this would be a bill from this year, which is $6,000.
Twice. I know, I just, yeah, I, I, I couldn't agree more though, that I mean, you know, we're doing all these steps here and we don't know what's happening in 20 years, right? And these are the people that, uh, I guess what I would say is the problem is, uh, these are going to be the experts. And they're the guys that are going to, but if you look at, uh, step two, which we're not looking at at this time, but these are the guys that are good at negotiating. They're going to, they're going to talk to a lot of people. They're going to talk to the, the companies in there. They're going to form the corporation. They've done these things like this. This is their expertise. That's my, uh, my.
And they've indicated, your worship, a corporation eventually who has the former commission and you got the provincial government. You're not talking. And with the corporation, you have opportunity to offer shares to the residents and residents. If they deserve, uh, they share in records and residence. And you have opportunity to offer shares of, let's say, Atco Water Pipeline, what's come along, a pipeline. Uh, there's, there's a lot of shares without taking over control. It could be done like that as well. Water Commission. There's a trouble with the.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I did step two, the, the legal representation. That's fine. We're not talking about that right now. We're talking about what is reviewing file for the boxes, making sure that something you solve kind of can be pulled easily. This is not, once if there's an issue with it, I understand. You want a lawyer or a legal representation to make sure it's rectified, but with nobody's any belief there's anything wrong. I just don't understand why we're paying 30,000 an hour. Some of you do things you don't understand.
When we talked, when the first time we talked, when we kind of agreed here, we thought it'd be around five or, five or six thousand dollars the first time we talked.
For the scope of work, we're just identifying documents, putting them in a timeline. Like, these are all kind of mundane kind of record keeping functions. Like, do not understand the, the going with that. You are an hour high paid professional. It's not, not that sort of scope of work for step one as far as like until we find something, when they go to land title, they say, oh, something isn't right here. Okay, well, that's where you, but there's no belief there's anything amiss. I don't understand the, the.
Nobody here knows that.
I don't have that expertise to know if the last file is complete or not. Anybody that talks.
As they do it, could they scan it and make sure everything's backed up on lipstick?
Everything costs what you cost.
They.
Well, you're thinking of an expensive professional you could find to do Monday middle of your own task. But there's no one that has the connections as well.
Just don't want us to get caught on being prudent. I understand that. We probably don't have a trust. Because we found out their friends sent the document, so it was seven dollars. Uh, but I don't know which last files were secluded. I don't know if they're secluded properly and how they were paid out well. I don't know if there's any contractual issues. I haven't read all the files. Some expertise.
Yeah, I, I, I get it. We're starting the coin. You can give me top of the pen stuff.
We have no reason to, but again, if there's, when there's an issue and an issue is, you know, uncovered, they're still going to charge more either way. So this is just be, see if there's any issue. Once there's an issue found, you have to go to them either way. But if that, we need them to find the issue because if there's no, there is some problematic issue to uncover, it's the formality of doing our diligence. If I know, but you can find something for a lot less than 350 an hour to, uh, do this, I guess is my point. If they're not, I mean, I understand that's what this firm charges for, for an associate's time, that is a fair rate for that scope of work. I don't think this is a fair scope of work. It's provincial. It's their credit.
Who would we get otherwise? It's a junior associate of, um, their profession is municipal government and they know water. So who else could we get that would know what looks right, what looks wrong, what isn't right, what isn't wrong? Who, who would do that?
I don't know, because I've had this for very little time and it's not much I have to look at that, but I'm just saying this is a getting expensive route to do it.
Yeah, exactly. I wouldn't know what's wrong with files. I'll be, I'll be honest with you. I'm not a land agent. And I don't know, yes, I've looked through the files cursorily and people were paid and there's land agreements there. But I have to go through everyone. I'm not a lawyer to determine if there's something else. And maybe 20 years down the road, if we're approaching on their land, we have to pay some more. Sometimes that happens in a land agreement. So I'm not a land agent. I'm not a land lawyer, not a lawyer at all. I don't want to take on that role. I certainly have the counsel. We're bringing this, we're bringing this forward. I, I have to strongly recommend we do our diligence here because it can be a lot more expensive to get caught than it is to have this looked at. And last files aren't all cut and dried like we seem to think they are because it depends on the land agent that was negotiating the deal at the time. And there's different land agents as well in all those files. Just balance of the.
So we just need a motion that you go with. Step one, administration would appreciate a motion for the whole thing. Get a motion to, uh, that's step one for Ganton. Uh, it's $8,075. Done?
Motion.
Okay. Both? Period. Um, files and policies. 9.1, we already caught it off. So we've had this again here. We're looking for, uh, first and second reading here, and then we would advertise in the paper to satisfy the N G A. Is that correct? Heard none?
That is correct.
All by, uh, all by the, I mean, the third reading, sometimes they're very.
And that's just a requirement.
Yes, and any old procedural.
It's required to be done every year.
What's the, your worship, chooses to go to three readings with unanimous consent? Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. Sorry. I knew that. Sorry, thanks.
Go ahead, zero. Yeah, it's fine. It's, uh, move, uh, first reading of bylaw 2023-01.
Thank you. Favor, period. Motion for second reading.
Second reading.
Done. Favor. Period. Advertising, well, sir. That's true. Well, it'll be in the, uh, yeah, I just, yeah, no, I installed on the name. I'm installing on the date. It'll be in this group. Yeah, we can get it by the deadline. Thanks. Thanks, Commissioner. 9.2 is the emergency, emergency management bylaw 2023-02. So first order on this one would be to, um, repeal the bylaw 2019.
Uh, that is correct. We, we're only asking for two readings tonight. We are waiting for, uh, council legal to give us a, a line in the bylaw that points to the regional. We have to keep our own bylaw, but, uh, looking at their legal, not charging them to have a point to it. And we just want to have two readings to make sure that when, uh, whatever comes out, you know, February for the annual visit, that we have to read again. So, um, acting, uh, acting a pointer reference to the regional bylaw is nothing unusual. Uh, we just want to make sure, maybe we don't need one. They're just going to check with their legal counsel to make sure. I just didn't want to have a bylaw, because your bylaw didn't point either to a regional. Uh, this was a bit shortened up quite a bit, but it has not, uh, the new one has not lost its flavor of what it's supposed to be. It is a little easier and we have no schedule for changes in this one. Not necessary to have them there. And we just demanded some of the new languages to use or the original. So are we saying that the last bylaw was, uh, wrong? No, uh, but it just needed to be cleaned up a bit, shortened a bit. Uh, I know, like I pointed, it's 31 of 48 in your council package when it talks about the agency. Uh, they don't list everything anymore because what happens is you need to bring someone else in. And it's just a shelving comprised of, in addition, the following persons may join or advise. A lot of questions, and when you meet all those people, you might need different ones. So we just cleaned it up a bit. Short stuff.
I was just, okay. I was just going to clarify. I think you alluded to it along the way there. Yeah, like I, I'd like to wait for third reading at least until after the, on the last bylaw, they actually provided like three hours worth of input. Like they, it was the whole night evening of them providing input into that bylaw.
Yeah.
I would think they probably will comment again, so.
I have no issue with that. That's why I want to do my fair bit of thought.
Yeah, okay, perfect.
Yeah, no worries.
All right, can I get a, uh, motion for the first reading to clear bylaw 2019?
I can make the motion.
Excellent. Favor, period. And then, and then a second motion for the bylaw, repeal bylaw to the. Favor. That is carried. What is the, you know, most?
Motion for consent to third, pardon me. Motion for consent to third. Oh, no, just a minute. Uh, late third. No, we can't.
We're not going to do this, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so, uh, then bylaw 2023-03. Um, we can hear the first and second reading now. Can I get a motion for the first reading of bylaw 2023-03? The John, favor. Period. Motion for the second reading. Okay.
Thank you, your worship.
That was third reading. Uh, 9.3. Under standard bylaws, uh, administration 2301. Will that plus as well?
Yes, thank you, your worship. Basically, we brought in previous service standards policy. And we, we changed the language in it that was respecting company, uh, municipality. So clean up on it. Uh, we only change names of the facilities in the number according to 2021 to 301 to reflect the fact we're passing it. Uh, it's working free in this one year. Uh, because it's not a document, it's going to be two. I come from my son's generation to provide some grammatical punctuation issues that will be incorporated into our policy. Calculated how we, as we do that, because there, I will be called grammatical administrative correction, so we can do that. Uh, as long as there's going to be language changes, uh, for the question. Uh, if there's a motion or comment or question, uh, about this, possible. Go ahead, great.
Uh, there's just a couple of things that I'm sure a lot of them, you probably covered here, the game grammar and. There's just a lot of the use of customer and such and company. I mean, there's work municipality and they're, they're members of the public. I mean, we're not necessarily selling them anything. We're not, they're people we engage with. I wouldn't necessarily call them customers and I wouldn't call us a company, right?
They can read me all.
Am I reading all of them? Okay.
That's okay. That's one of the things we change.
Yeah, that was one of the reasons.
Yeah, that was one of the things that was just irritating the heck of me as I was reading through it. Okay, perfect, yeah.
Okay. Move down to page 47.
Okay, and then one, one that was involved under six, there's actually the, the last sentence there. Ensure that our facilities, products, and services are accessible to people with disabilities. We do not have the means or resources to make any number of our facilities available. Right? And if you're saying, and if you're saying this is going to be our policy that our insurance facilities are, are accessible for people with disabilities, are you looking at a $40,000 bathroom renovation? You haven't even left this building.
Our bathroom.
Not even close.
The women's one is.
Not even close. Yeah, it's, it's a 40-page manual of very specific measurements and stuff. You'd be renovating both bathrooms entirely. So I just, my point is, there should be some sort of caveat there within budgetary limitations, within reason. We should strive to, but it's not necessarily practical for us to go and do that to every building right now.
Where's the corporate, uh, corporate? Counselor Gilbert, which is a military. What if instead of the word ensure, put strive to?
Yeah, something that's a, we would like to, but I still want to say we absolutely will because we can't. We don't have the means to as well. I'm not opposed to doing so. I just feel that wouldn't happen over a 10-year time span, let alone this week.
That's a problem. We can do that directly. Uh, our facilities, products, services.
Yeah, and it was, yeah, it's problematic and, yeah, well, just, yeah, I know we don't, not easy.
And myself, I didn't know if we needed to keep the word disabilities in there. I just thought we just need to make it available to all.
There actually is like standards for doing so, especially with like Washington. And I guess. Those sorts of things where.
Wish we could say special ability. Uh, we will check on that wording, though. Uh, I know we have some disabilities somehow, but we'll.
No, it's, it's everybody.
So do you want to, uh, do you want to put that standard as a policy with that induction or do you want to back? Back for?
Just, yes, somebody's, just making sure to strive, I think. You have to point to the office, yeah.
Yeah. Somebody want to make a motion of that? We can report back to this on Cal if you'd like. Uh, where should we get, you can pass it to me and we can, uh, see their changes. Or we can bring it back to Cal.
I'm just trying to find the name of it.
The sort of standard.
All sort of standard.
Yeah, I already, I already.
A D M dash 23 dash 01.
Yeah, I moved to approve, uh, policy A D M 2301 with the, uh, grammatical changes discussed as well as the change to the last bulletin under, uh, next responsibilities.
Thank you.
Favor.
So we don't have to do anything with the 2021 because it was never brought in?
No, you don't have to. So this would take some place. So it, it's right in there under number four, the last one showing. This is policy number another, uh, couple of states, or if there was a policy number of no one, so now we did it tonight with your motion. I think, uh, which is number head, then we'll.
All right, um. Enders, structure, number 11. Oh, public comments. You guys step it back there. Anything you want to break? I mean, just. Irene? Irene?
Tracking, motion tracking.
Uh, yes, please to make a comment, sir.
Um. The problem they were having with, with Kerry. With the last county. What's that ever? Is it one?
What do you mean, problem? Uh, that was just in regard to the stuff that she's storing in the facility. Just in regard to the stuff that she's storing in the facility?
Uh, yes. Um, she wasn't, it was intended that she paid rent for the use of that, and it's, it's all, also, it was, um, all that equipment, that's more heavily drawn to, uh, modern technology, similarly, with purchase by sources from a local store, which the policy is so, it's a vice, it's a permit for direct, so, in my mind, that's something, obviously, as a policy.
Thank you, I think we, we've been through this here, and we all get there, Kelly, you have something you can say about that?
Yeah, I was, I was, I was.
Sure, okay.
Yeah, so, that's correct, everything that was, I was, received, and all of that equipment that was purchased is owned by the town, and it's in our possession, as the, for, for it, maybe this is, is active right now, so anything that was specific to that, um, for running their events, if they, if that, or, or the bench, and for their mud runs, and for underground, rattle, all of that has been moved, the, the extra, and it's, we're , we're, 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 we're all considered.
I, I think, this is the, the standard.
Yeah, I remember, we, we talked about it quite a few went rounds in a row, I do. So, I think it's, it's, it's.
Central, so.
You have it under. Anything, anything else that we need to, uh, figure out? Or agenda? Well, um, if there's nothing else, we'll take, uh, motion for, for recess, and we'll come back, we got to, take a recess.
I'll move that we take that, yeah.
Favor. Period. Take them.